September meeting, we're coming to order. June, where you do our prayers?
Yeah, let's pray. President and Father, let's come to you again, just thank you for this day, Lord, and for all the blessings. I would just ask you be with us, we can help the city of business, lead us, guide us, direct us right after service, your glory. Will just continue to watch over us and bless us, keep us safe and healthy. Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Jessica, you want to lay us in a prayer?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had a chance to read all the revets?
Yes.
Any objections or requests? Is that good?
Oh, we're not concerned.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, big seven, is that red?
Brian, what's your card?
Alright. I'm gonna do it from here. Uh, July and August have been pretty busy for us. Uh, altogether, we wrote a hundred and seventy-six citations. That's actual citations. We had a hundred and eighty-six contacts in July, but a hundred and twenty-four in August. Extra patrols, we had two in July and one in August. Felony arrests, we've had, uh, three in July, five in August. Uh, misdemeanors, we had two, we didn't have any, we have one misdemeanor, I forgot to put it on there this month. We've had three drug arrests both months. Uh, I have put in for another grant, another equipment grant, the seventy-five thousand dollar cap, and I've put in for sixty, almost sixty-nine thousand dollars and stuff. Uh, that's gonna include, uh, some license plate readers, one for each end of town, and, uh, a speed trailer, two new radars, and a radar gun. I believe that was it, wasn't it? And then, we got approved for a Truenarc. That second paper we hand you kinda explains what a Truenarc is. Uh, it's gonna be a lot more safe, it's a lot safer for us to handle the drugs, because we don't have to open it up, dip any out, put them in a test kit. Then she lays the package down, take this Truenarc you put on it, and sniffs it, and tells you what it is.
Like on the catch a smuggling.
Yeah, uh, it also tells us right here if it's got fentanyl in it, or anything else. So, we're gonna be the only ones in Lawrence County with it. The way I had to do it, I had to agree to make it available to all the schools in Lawrence County, which I don't have a problem with it, I talked with Zach over that, he doesn't have a problem with that. Uh, this one that we're getting is kinda the newer versions, it'll even sniff the vape pens, and tell you they got THC, or they've injected them with meth. Because what a lot of people are starting to do now, they're starting to take those vape pens and needles, and they're injecting dope in them. So, uh, just another way for us to, uh, battle the drug problem around here. Police Chief, Police Chief's convention's actually the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. The twenty-third, I have to go to Little Rock for training on the Truenarc, and I'll bring it back with me. And our committee report, uh, has anybody seen the cafeteria floor since we painted them?
If not, you need to.
Yes, they are a lot better, that, and the walls have been painted, we put a lot of work in there. So if you hadn't looked at it, I'd give a chance to go up there. We had five rentals the last two months. Alright, my next thing is... This is what we've been doing the last two months. Uh, this right here is a drug bust that we done, here in town. We got two-hundred-and-twelve grams of meth out of there, uh, and all that paraphernalia, and got some ecstasy and, uh, some, uh, fentanyl pills. That's the same drug bust. That's the same. That's some of the, the meth we got out of there. Those were, those in that Ziploc bag up there, those were some big shards of crystal. Right here, I got called out by the, uh, state police and the Drug Task Force. We ran Jude around the truck, Jude hit on the truck, and we looked all over the truck, finally I crawled up under. That was in the spare tire, it's a blue bag. When we opened the bag, we got a pound of meth out of it. See the shards, how big they are? This here, I got called out by the state police and DTF. Jude hit on the car, we got to looking, half an ounce of cocaine. Already packaged for sale. That was at, uh, Double, Double B's, right here by Double B, on sixty-three. Alright. I had the weekend before last. They called me out about one o'clock in the morning. I get out, Jude hits on the car. And have you noticed this little bottle right here, with the pink solution in it? That is actually meth, liquid meth. Jude hit on it, we found that during our search of the car. Inside this was meth and a pipe that he threw down in the, that tea. Well, the way that, the way that turns out is all that weight counts toward the weight of the dope that we got. It was three-hundred... Twenty-something grams of meth. We got it back to the station. Luckily, uh, LaDonna, a friend of ours got us some fentanyl test strips, we tested it. We never found any dope other than what was in the cup. It, both of them tested positive for fentanyl. And luckily, we had gloves on handling this. Uh, I got, I left the sheriff's office about, it was after three-thirty. At ten minutes till six, I got a phone call, the guy was deceased. He had a dope on him, and it was laced with fentanyl. So, fentanyl is ramping up, and so is cocaine in this area. Right here on August twenty-third, we, we participated in a two-county saturation with DTF, Lawrence County, Randolph County, probation and parole, Arkansas State Police and Arkansas Highway Police. Uh, out of that, through both counties, we had three-hundred-and-forty traffic stops. We did four DWI arrests, we wrote two-hundred-and-fifty citations and warnings. We had fifteen drug arrests, seventeen miscellaneous arrests, twenty-four firearms seized. We've done eleven home visits, one search and one. Jude searched four houses and thirteen cars that day, and we found, we had two, we hit one in a house, and then we hit two in the car that we got. So, been a busy two months, of course. So...
Alright.
Wow.
Good work.
Lot of open area. Well, thank you, sir, there you go.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any questions?
Our felony, our felony case files have really, our felony cases have really, really been a lot here lately. And that takes the majority of my time right now, is felony case files, felony cases. I had one that I've been working on since. It was in January, and we finally got a warrant on it two weeks ago, and made the arrest.
Alright, well, moving on.
Oh, I got something else I need to say.
What?
Alright. I forgot the date, but a couple of years ago, I made accusations for Miss Brock, that she had embezzled money. That, there's not been any kind of, uh, charges or anything brought against her. Nothing has, she's never been, uh, investigated for embezzlement or anything else, so those, those those words were false, they were not true.
Alright.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say that, Brian, I know that, that, um, you and I had a conversation, and I want you to know that I admired you before then. I admired you after you personally apologized to me personally. I want you to know that that meant more to me than what anything possibly ever could, because I do admire the work, and I do hold you at a high regard versus the income that you make by putting your life, life on the line. And so, it means a lot to me personally, and it means a lot to me professionally as well, with me trying to open up a business, because that is important, that we all can be together and try and so make our community the best that it can possibly be. So, thank you very much, and it does mean a lot to me, so thank you.
Well, moving on to new business, Ms. Brock, it shows you are on the agenda.
Yes. So... Each one of these. Thank you. And sorry, I tried to look professional, but I can't seem to get all of this rubber cement or the flat roof off of me, so please forgive me for looking like I'm not trying to get everything from the lid. Sure? Yeah, okay. Do you need one of these, Cody? Oh, I got plenty, yes. We're both here, but we're on opposite ends of the spectrum right now. There you go. You're welcome. Alright. So, our library, Cody has, as he is well aware, we've had conversation online before this meeting here. Um, he has started a ballot initiative, which is to put removing a mill from our county library. That's part of our library here. So, if this happens, it's gonna cause a couple of libraries to shut down that are already struggling areas. Lynn Arkansas is one, he's already went to the city council and got them on board with doing this. He and I's had a conversation, because, as y'all know, how I am about our youth, and how important it is that we help our youth. I know for a fact, because I'm one of those mentors who has taken our children to the public library, and I sit in my car while they're doing their homework, because they do not have internet. So, that is critical, because this is gonna stop and close two libraries. He and I had a, had a conversation about, well, they can afford to get them internet, it's not that expensive. That's privilege. We have single mothers who can't afford that, and they're grateful for the Wi-Fi that it puts out. I also use our library over in Warner Ridge. Our tax money pays for this library, whenever we pay our property taxes. They did this because they want to take a mill away from our public library and give it to the county. But that has to be voted on as well. We have forty-three percent of the money, because they are not funded like the county who gets two mills regardless. This comes in off of tax money that we, the taxpayers, pay. And it's critical for our childrens to be able to have this library, and not just them. People such as myself who travel, who also uses hoopla, because I'm a big fan of the books on CD, I don't know if y'all have a library card, if you don't, I suggest getting one, because it's free. You can listen to books on CD while you're traveling, no matter where you're at, it's gonna cut that out. It also is gonna cut out, for example, where we have, um, two weeks ago, they came in where, um, uh, fence snap people were coming in to help get their utilities and stuff done, going into those rooms. It's gonna, it's gonna cut out employees in an area where we're already starving. And so, with this already struggling with our children, I'm gonna ask that we say no to this, and then let's figure out another way. He has seen the budget, and so have I. And let's talk about how much money the county has versus the library, and the library, as y'all are also aware of COVID money, the library got COVID money, just like we did here in our city. We've used that money wisely. We've used it wisely. They're upset, and I said that, I'm talking about the county judge, Barnhill, and him, that was their little thing, alright? Please, y'all, we cannot make our rural community hurt our children. I am asking that y'all help shut this down. We can figure out where to get the money, because that millage, forty-three percent, is what funds that. That is gonna be lost. That comes in off of our taxes. Where the county gets millage, right off the bat. They don't, the library does not. So I am asking, for the children's sake, let's not do this for our children. They need us, sometimes we have to take a stand and say, we can't do it. We have single parents who can't afford it, and they use those resources. I just helped a person down there at the library file to get his voting rights back. I mean, I use it too, because I don't wanna bring them to my house. So it's a central location, and it's also a safe spot where we can get online and do that stuff. Let's not forget about the people with resumes, or people that's even filling out for whatever. You know? We need our libraries, y'all. We need them. If we don't, y'all may not hurt their children. I don't have a child in this fight, but I will fight for every child, and I think that every one of y'all know how I am for a child, and that's why I'm here. Let's not do this, not to our library. Okay? Anybody have any questions? Because I got, I'm loaded. How exactly could City of Black Rock help with this? Well, first of all, we're gonna need to, one, let people know what is this ballot initiative about, and Cody's gonna have his day, so he's gonna be able to talk about it here in a second as well. But two, with us coming here with the council, let's not do what Lynn Arkansas did and say, okay, we're for it, and accept it, because that's what he got from Lynn Arkansas. That's how come I'm here, right now. And I'm gonna follow this man, because it's that important. Oh, it's important. Any other questions?
I guess so.
Thank y'all.
Just gonna make a couple more coffees. I'm gonna go pop this up, and I'll take a moment to handle this. Give them up share a few days.
I would like one for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate y'all having me today. Um, I prepared this, actually, this morning. These, uh, property tax facts.
Can we go ahead and adjust the first one, where that's two mills, the county road gets it right off the back? The two mills is a vote, that's not something that comes through, it is a vote.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get into all that in just a second. I, um, and what she's referring to is, uh, in Arkansas, the Arkansas Constitution provides that the Quom Court, the nine JP's in this county, can raise five mills for general purposes without a vote of the people, uh, three mills for the county road department without a vote of the people, but the county library, it requires a vote of the people for any, any tax. Which, in two thousand and one, when this tax was put in, this additional mill was added, and the county library and the county road department both received two mills, so, and as far as property tax goes. But what, what is this, uh, really all about? Let me, let me say that, for starters, this is, I, I wrote into the library, I still live at the library. When I was in college, I was the only person that actually had to use the library, because I didn't have a computer to type my papers and all that sort of stuff. So, I understand the importance of libraries. However, uh, I think this is a new age. And I think we need to keep things in perspective, there's been a lot of hype, uh, and a lot of misunderstanding. What this will not do, if you notice here on the bottom, it will not shut down the library entire. It will not get rid of books, we're still gonna have library books, we're still gonna have free computers, we're still gonna have free Wi-Fi, and we're, we're still gonna have reading programs. She is correct that the hoopla program, an Overdrive program, may be terminated, which, if you look at the numbers, like, I don't think the, uh, cost justifies it. Of course, does anyone here know what the hoopla program is? Exactly, that's my point. Not very many people know what that is, it's a, you can go online and get free, read free books, and it's a streaming service, kinda like Netflix. But, the funny thing is, you know, it costs the county about fifteen hundred dollars a month for that program, but there are other programs you can get for free, Liverbox, things like that, that does exactly the same thing, don't even have to go to the library. Um, anyways, and she was referring to Lynn, there was no vote or anything taken, I was asked to come and talk to Lynn about it. Uh, of course, one of the three branches is in Lynn, the other one's in Emboden, and one in Warner Ridge. Um, and it was with their blessing that we went forward with this, because they, in their opinion, the, the amount of people that use the Lynn branch just did not justify the cost. So this is not an attack on the library, this is just simply recalibrating the budget to fit our priorities. We're trying to get more bang for our buck. We don't wanna throw a, a whole lot of cash at something that only a few people are using. And, uh, here's some of the num, just look at some of these numbers here. Uh, of course, right at the top, the library has two mills, that's, one mill's worth approximately two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. In twenty-twenty-three, the library used four-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars of its six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar budget, only seventy-two percent of it. And like she said, there was, the library does have significant savings from the COVID years. Uh, this year, the budget is eight-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. Uh, in twenty-twenty-three, the library received, and I'm talking about all three branches, twenty-seven thousand visits. Exactly how they count this, I'm not sure. I went up to the library to see if there was a count, counter, I went up to the Lynn library to see if there was some type of counter by the door, I didn't see one. But somehow, they keep up with this. The Warner Ridge branch, uh, had most of the traffic, of course, seventy percent of it, over twenty thousand visits. Uh, Lynn and Emboden branches had combined total of a little over six thousand visits. Uh, if you were to calculate, you know, take the budget, the total budget, uh, every time someone visits, we are in essence spending anywhere from sixteen to thirty dollars for every time someone goes in the door. I think we should think of it in that those terms. How, how much are you willing to spend for, for someone to go to the library? Thirty thou, thirty-five thousand books were checked out. Uh, the library also has electronic books through hoopla and Overdrive, both which include streaming like Netflix, and I think that's important to, to point out. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying with absolute certainty that, that is what it's utilized for mostly, but I think it would be safe to predict that it is utilized more for, uh, as a streaming program other than for reading. Twenty-twenty-three, computer and internet usage, I found this very interesting. Warner Ridge had thirteen thousand people using computers or internet over twenty-twenty-three, Lynn had fifteen thousand. And Emboden had two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-nine. I got these numbers from Ashley Burris. The thing is, what I, what I realized, what's going on here, is that the people near the library branches in Lynn, the city council even told me this, are utilized, the whole entire downtown Atlanta has free internet, because of, of the Wi-Fi. Hotspot is so strong in that library that, uh, you can receive internet about two and three blocks away. Which I don't personally have any issue with, but I think it's po, it's important to, to note that the city and the county are both willing, even if the library itself poses, they're willing to keep the hotspot there. So, which is much, much cheaper than having a library and paying staff to, to utilize this, this place where only a few people go every week. So, even one of our local internet service providers, I won't say which one, asked them to de, to decrease the strength of the, the, uh, Wi-Fi, so, uh, because we're pretty much kinda giving away free internet, took one of them in. And every time someone drives by and put a phone, an iPhone, or a, an iWatch, or, or, um, has one of those fancy TVs that's Wi-Fi, um, has Wi-Fi connectivity, or a tablet, every time someone then comes in that circle, it counts in this total. So I think that's why the numbers are a little, uh, exaggerated. How do we compare to other counties? If you look on the back, we are the only county in northeast Arkansas that has a two-mill tax for its library. Creve de County has one mill. Creve de County has, uh, point four mills. Cross County is the only county that comes anywhere near, it's one-point-five mills, Green County one mill, Independence County one mill, Jackson is one, Mississippi has none, Pointe County has one-point-three, Randolph County has one-point-four, Sharp has one. What, this is only two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, what will happen if this is passed? Well, it will just simply go back to the taxpayers. This tax will no longer be collected. Yes, there are some who would like the Quom Court to levy, if they lower that tax, to levy, uh, a, a mill for the road department, uh, for, um, so that money can go there instead to the library. And, but some, that's how some wanna do it, but not everyone wants to do it, some people just wanna keep the money themselves. Um, and, and just a little bit about the lo, the road department, two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars is equivalent to approximately thirty miles of gravel. Right now, our gravel budget is only, just a little under thirty miles. We have twelve-hundred miles of gravel road. If you were to take a, a straight line from Warner Ridge, you could go all the way to the bottom. That's how many miles the county judge has to maintain of gravel road. And he only has in his budget every year thirty miles worth of gravel. So this would, in essence, double it, so to sixty miles. But that, that's not a foregone conclusion, that isn't necessarily what is going to happen, but it could happen. Uh, something else that we could use it for, uh, road department employees, ten road department employees make less than thirty thousand dollars a year, eleven sheriff staff. Eleven sheriff's deputies make under forty thousand a year. And I think, as was mentioned before, I think our law enforcement officers in this county are woefully underpaid. I mean, consider what they're making in Crickin County now, and, and in Jonesboro. I, I think what's happening is, this becomes a training ground, and then they go to the hiring, uh, departments. But I think if we were to, uh, I think we need to try to close that gap. Uh, nineteen jailers make under thirty-two thousand a year, I don't, I've been, I was a Brexler officer, I've been in the state prison for, um, six years, and, uh, working in the jail or prison was no joke. So, thirty-two thousand years, I, I don't know how anyone can live off that. Five of our emergency nine-one-one dispatchers make under thirty thousand dollars a year. Two hundred ninety thousand dollars could give fifty-eight county employees a five thousand dollar raise, or twenty-nine employees, ten thousand dollars raise, that's a significant pay raise. But my home point in all this is the library, I love the library, the library is a great and wonderful thing. But the taxpayers deserve to get more bang for their buck. And the, the library's been made, uh, out to be something akin to, uh, some, almost, people are talking about it, like it's Saint Jude's Children's Research Hospital, like it's.
Well, you can get information there on Saint Jude's.
Well, I'm just saying that the, 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 the level to which, uh, people have, uh, in, are talking about it, uh.
Knowledge is power.
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree, but the thing is, it is a redundancy, we have the schools. People are acting like it is the, the, uh, ban which is holding back the gate of, the flood of illiteracy that this passes. But that is just not the truth, I don't think there's anyone in here who's, kids, grandkids.
They're going to close two libraries, it is true, you are shutting down two libraries. And as an IT specialist.
This, this is not a debate.
Sorry.
Sorry. It's, it's.
I just, I just don't think, uh. I think maybe libraries were, they're not, they, they are not, I agree, they are extremely, they are a person's knowledge of the wider world, like, that's where we, but of course, most of us have this, and like you said, not everyone has this, but almost everyone I know, even the most poor, and I've worked with the most poor at DHS, almost everyone, and their kids has one of these. And, uh, as far as these things like, um, people not being able to come do their food stamps, all that, they will. There are simply people that come up there and utilize the table, and that does not cost a thing. And those people, those programs are still able to come into the library and help people get on food stamps. There's still going to be books, there's still, still going to be free internet, there's still going to be free computers. And even probably, to a limited degree, they will still be available in Emboden and Lynn. And, uh, really, that's what all this is about, it's just re-appropriating money, moving money around, uh, to match our priorities. That's really all it comes down to, this is not an attack on the library, it is not at all. But this, people are chanting, save our library, well, that makes people think that the library is going to completely shut down, it's not. It's not. Anyways, that's all I have.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have one more, we have a resolution, we need to read it.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. Resolution, resolution, zero zero eight dash two oh two four. A resolution approving the amendment to the lease agreement for the leased and the Black Rock School premises, and authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment to the lease agreement on behalf of the City of Blackrock, Arkansas. Whereas, the Blackrock City Council previously authorized the mayor of Blackrock to execute and deliver a certain lease agreement with the Emboden Area Charter School, eek, a corporation duly incorporated pursuant to the laws of the State of Arkansas and duly authorized to operate as an Arkansas charter school, quotation, "the charter school", in quotation, "to lease certain portions of the old Blackrock School premises", whereas the charter school has expressed its desire to lease additional portions of the old Blackrock High School building for an increased, an increased rent amount of six thousand per month, and has agreed to execute an amendment to the original lease agreement. Whereas, the Blackrock City Council has provided and executed copy of the amendment to the lease agreement prior to the adoption of this resolution, and the Blackrock City Council has had ample time to properly review said amendment to the lease agreement. Whereas, the Blackrock City Council finds that the terms and conditions of the amendment, amendment to the lease agreement are adequate and favorable to the City of Blackrock, Arkansas, and finds that it is in the best interest of the City of Blackrock, Arkansas, and its citizens for the mayor to enter into, execute and deliver the amendment to the lease agreement on behalf of the City of Blackrock, Arkansas. Therefore, being resolved that the terms and conditions of the amendment to the lease hereby be, be, are hereby ratified and approved, and the mayor of Blackrock, Arkansas is hereby authorized to enter into, execute, and deliver on behalf of the City of Blackrock, Arkansas, the amendment to the lease agreement passed and approved this ninth day of September twenty twenty-four.
Is it ready?
Do we have to make a thing for a second reading?
No, this is a resolution.
Resolution, that's all. I make a motion, we accept the read?
Yep, second.
Okay, that concludes all of our business, does anybody else have anything? Do you have any? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, adjourn.
All right, second. Okay, say, uh. Thank you.
Charlie.
Oh, hey, hey, Chris, it's up six? Excuse me for not getting. Oh, I wish it was, it's not two, it's, uh. Somehow that one word.
She's the guard dog. Oh, no, him and her get, have a good time together.
She likes them now.
It's a little bit, now?
Yeah.
Lynn, what's Lynn there?
Who?
Lynn.
She's Aunt John, out of school. She left.